All right, so this is the time to call the meeting in order and start.
I would like to make a motion to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Lori Bojo, President. Kelsey Cook is absent. Maureen Helmut.
Yes.
Allison Kemp.
Yes.
Jacob Negocia.
Here.
All right, I'll make a motion for excuse, Kelsey Cook, please.
I'll vote.
Support from Jacob. All right. And then, approval by? Oh, we should, okay. Roll call please. Or if you're not ready, roll call. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Motion passes? All right, approval of the agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve the revised agenda as presented.
Support. So you know what public hearings?
I'll give a vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes?
I'll keep you on it.
Keep you on it, yeah. Most of what happened, Kelsey needs to be in charge. So you know public hearings? Next is call to the public.
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Alba, and I reside over in Stone Ridge Hills. And I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm a candidate for the Township Trustee position in Oxford. And should I win, I wanted to introduce myself and say I look forward to working with you all and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Democrat Republican.
Republican.
Just checking.
Anyone else? Next on the agenda, it's number seven, consent agenda. There's a motion.
I'll make motion to receive and file contention, that means one and two.
Support. Motion by Helmut, support by?
Bojo?
Oh, my God, I'm so sorry. The one over there. Yeah. All right. Next, I'm? Okay, all right, I am rusty, I apologize. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? None. Next on the agenda is approval. Seven B, approval items.
If there's no changes, I'll make motion to approve the seven each of that items B. One, two, and three, leaving the bills in the amount of $323,650.76.
Motion by Helmut. Bojo? Yes, Helmut?
Yes.
Negocia?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
And Cook is absent. I'm finished, all business. Can you?
Yep, we're still waiting for DTE's contract or power engineering thing for the? Do the boring, we're waiting for bond, I think, and they're talking about running the power and scanning the street that will feed the streetlights for parking lot. That's all I have.
I think it's all looking very nice over there, including the parking lot on the east side now.
Question, at that point, does that pole disappear, the one kind of like on the side of the?
No, that is not related to that, that's still going to be a relocation, that will feed the house, that's just east of Break Street equipment. What do you mean? It's pretty, but this is to feed the power to the streetlight over the mountain in the parking lot.
Okay.
Can you give a comment from council? Hearing none, move on to eight B, Lakeside Drive, you will drop off and pick up.
Nothing new to present, council, we had some discussion last month, we're still looking at some of the actions. It's not been much of a problem, today was achieved. The problems still die off.
Yeah.
We will, we will stay on that point.
Very pleasant.
When we pay Lakeside Drive permanently, it will just take a long, long time to pay.
So people can't?
Horned sparrows and cones forever?
No, if you're trying?
One way to do it.
Can we?
Moving on to new business, I've issued grant to district applicants, applicant project phase two.
So, I did include a memo into this, county has recognized selling multiple bonds, so next few years, just for one time our way, we had a repayment option. But again, if you look at the minor amount of interest, rate wise, I should say. Here's a really good email to your biggest government. I think it made more sense in this case too, to give the warrants about 200 cents. And, we're currently earning about 4.5% of our own funds in Michigan class and other things, LGIP. I've been told that there's another one going to be coming, that it will be in a similar range, but down the road, it could be a whole fund, so the next two or three years, about 1.5%, so it'd be better for us to just pay the payment of the lowest one and pay it as we go, you know, and save our fund payout and higher than what we expect. Probably four to three six months. So that's in the case, we would have to let them know that we're going to stop for the prepaid option.
Need a motion?
Yeah, we have a recommendation in the open county, we tend to pay the 500 some payments as presented from the reverse, he has made a agreement assessment that is including packet.
Scum.
Still supporting. Okay. Motion by Helmut, so reported by Bojo. Any other further questions or discussion? Roll call? Kemp? Yes. Negocia?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Cook is absent. Nine B, resolution 24-06, L.D.A. grant application of people with voiders for me.
Okay, this is the thing we discussed last month. Payment? Our payment, our last month's meeting about trying to get the bond for next year's construction season, and we talked about what's free, we have different options. Council opted for the voiders stretch between the end and the end, it's very similar, almost identical length, and it's controlled for the apartment private we're going to be doing this summer. And so that's the project we would include as part of the grant application to M.D.A., which is due tomorrow, so I would get this uploaded tomorrow, if you want to be prepared.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 2406, ten, ninja door, to, to, to.
Support.
Motion by Helmut, supported by Negocia. Roll call please. Helmut?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Negocia?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to ordinance of the sewer water rates, chapter 78, first reading.
Again, we talked about this during our budget workshop, and in the last month, what we are proposing is a flat four dollar, or? Four dollar rate increase and a five dollar rate increase. And if you're operating your monthly, regular service fee or capital fee, five dollars on water and water and sewer, as reflected in the new rate scheduling, you see in front of you. Yeah, by the way, the last ever increase was 2014.
Any discussion from council?
We'll have a second reading next month?
Yep, we get back to it. I'm sorry, we're just public hearing, noticing the thing, first. Basically, we'll just update the ordinance plans, update the billing rate table.
Did we, we finally got the water and sewer rates in the category minutes?
Yes, it's basically trapping bases all right out of this table.
They used to not be.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know why. I'll make a motion.
I do have a question, um, sorry, I'm just trying to understand, now you see, you have rates on the first page and then also on the third page, and they're different?
Yep, first one is for water usage rates.
Okay, and the second one is?
Sewer, yep. And you see in addition on the water usage, that's pre-flat monthly rate based on the meter size, and then you have the $3.96 per thousand gallon of water.
Okay, all right, I got it. Thank you.
If you have further discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the first screening of the amendment to water rates, chapter 7, 7B.
Support, motion by Helmut, supported by Kemp. Roll call please. Bojo?
Yes.
Negocia?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Helmut?
Yes.
Do we need a motion to set this second meeting?
We'll do it automatically, otherwise that will be our standard procedure.
Moving on to Chairville's solicitation, veteran village 501(c)(3), organization consider request for the.
Yeah, in this case, too, Chair and I, we've done, Chair and I have looked back and forth with Kevin, it's, one of our concerns is they talked about putting sidewalks or sandwich boards in the middle of intersections, you know? Other people are training, they're staying on the line, and stuff like that, we think that's a bad idea, I'm not quite sure where I'm buried, either way. They would like to put a sign board on sidewalk, and people will see somebody like that in a veteran's uniform, they kind of think it's just while they're there. I don't think they, they too put like four foot sign and left turn line, it's a good idea.
On 24, could they put them on the medians there?
Well, they'll go all the way down, they're going to rain down the intersection.
Right, and if you get the heads up?
Yeah, you're right, 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 yeah, we put them up at the mid black property, yes.
Just veterans collective?
Yep, yep, that's just an advance to the game.
Because I saw that, I'm like, someone's going to die.
Yeah, and all the people are training, stay right in the line, like, you can say what you want, someone is still here to you, of course, right? But yeah, that's a good idea, but we, for the north and south.
They can put whatever word they want on it, just to advance the intersection.
Yeah.
Get your coin down, dude. You can't do it on birthday.
Yeah, there's no islands.
So, they, they said they were flexible on what date, when they were looking for. Is there a recommendation that you have that would coexist with the DVA events and whatnot?
Not off the top of my head, um, they were looking to do, I think, what, the two of them over the summer.
One in the summer, one in the fall?
Yeah, there you go, one similar on the fall.
Could you let them know to check, because I know our fire department usually doesn't do dry, other sets, American Union doesn't, they are, just aim to connect with us and confirm the dates are available.
Band as well, I don't know, do any others?
The land, like?
Do that? I know the marching band does this, because I have a personal?
I don't think in a couple of years, out of their scene.
I think when they stopped standing in the middle of the road, they had to stand at corners and then run out, when the streetlight said, whoa, whoa.
Might have made a mess.
Took the fun.
Paid for a lot of years ago, didn't they, that way? Do you want to get with every kind of give, real?
Yeah, so?
Recommendations?
Yeah, we can give them a recommendation of maybe one in the summer and one in the fall, that doesn't conflict with other ones that we're already, you know, aware of.
And I, 0% those trans administration should be allowed, almost like?
That's what they're even, that's what they're stating. And you see, Chair, uh, and some feedback there is, you know, about the, so the table registration has been expired, and we do follow one and that was the initial thing, so they did provide a lot of the ones. They seem to be in, in, in this first timeframe, like, oh, they expired, and came through 3125, so they're fully registered from general Michigan. So.
I'll make a motion to approve the request for Chairville's solicitation for veteran village 501 organization, the administration to confirm the dates and follow up their suggestions, design the license signs and?
Support.
Motion by Helmut, supported by Negocia. All right, all in favor? Any ayes? None, motion passes. Moving on to these, uh, verdict payment repairs and you can't even pull up from reality.
Yeah, and I think we talked a little bit about this on other streets as well, during our budget workshop, we started the section from Glassy West, well, no, the West Elm Lane, the mall car, we're going to do some repairs on it. We collected some board examples, which are a couple thousand dollars, and that's from the council, haven't approved those yet, and so there's some engineering code put together by Row. For a lump sum fee of $12,000, that includes also the advertising the project and responding to questions during bid, and the sensibility to bid open, evaluating bids, references, and providing award recognition. Put in the traffic detour plan, we talked about the detour plan, that's all inclusive of their map receipt, lump sum fee of $12,000. This is the project that we're looking to utilize some of the open county board commissioners, local approval program, 2023 and 2024 fund for around $24,000 combined, which we would match with our own. But, Don Bradley and Paul from Row and I, we walked this a month or so ago, private could be in the $45,000 range, and there's a couple of projects that need to be done, and then make the, uh, puddling and pooling of water. And there's a few, a little bit of stretch, maybe 100 feet of this, that's going to be pulled out for the other, you know, two lifts, because it's that mad in that area. This is something we would, we would like to do this year, for when the council try to eliminate the water racing problems. But we did this, I will get it engineered, don't know if we get something back by the July, I thought, we don't get it back, we can count it by till August. Bit of hole, that probably takes about 60, 75 days to really get the work done, but it's not a huge project to work.
After walking the June estimate, come across? Things we can add. Let's get it back to us.
Yeah, this is major fund money, right, major road funds, so major road funds is better funded than local road funds, that we're doing a lot of waterline projects on, so it's, we haven't used any major road funds, it's a condensed project, a portion of that was. And in addition, this is the only stretch of federal aid eligible funds in the village from Glassy, although 24, I believe, and today, the road missions are a tip coming up for 26 and 29, 2026 and 2029, that's meaning probably try to get on that transportation improvement program to the county wide system. And for, we may be in 27, 28, 29, we could get some federal $80 to do the entire stretch from Glassy to 24. But in the meantime, we can't wait, we're hoping to get these repairs done. And utilize the $1,000 that the county has thrown at first to match.
I walked the, heard the crow with a few times, it needs to that, so.
Yeah, walking over there.
There's a couple sections just east of the O'Leanton Block property that we will come across and do, like, maybe a 15, 20 section, but the fast majority works in the West Elm Lane and the North Side, and it's a call drive, which is maybe even like a 10, 20 foot curve replacement, trying to not do too much of that. Doing some pretty decent shape, but elevation wise, it's what we're ready about.
Is there any chance of getting in town before school starts?
For a while. Again, and the detour plan, we looked at too, about those coming in from Lakeville Road out there in town, if they're looking south, we can detune down Drainer, down Glassy Drainer, we're hitting Oracle Center by high school, Great Road, obviously others need to come through, and we'll look at the detail of that plan. And it's not a long, long project, you know, it'll be two weeks.
Right.
It's kind of concrete to cure out waves and drive the roads and stuff, part of that delay.
About break left.
So, so really, I'll look for tonight's approval to go with the road contract and get the design engineering going.
So you know further discussion, I'll make a motion to authorize the village manager to sign his contract with Row for the engineering and sign for the east, east verdict street repairs as proposed in the Row, posted dated June 4th, 2004.
The 4th?
Motion by Kemp, supported by Helmut. Roll.
Could you put the mom in the motion, I apologize.
Up to $12,000 of this.
Just say it in the motion. Up to $12,000.
Up to $12,000, got it? Thank you. Roll call, please. Helmut?
Yes.
Negocia?
Yes.
Kemp?
Yes.
Bojo?
Yes.
Cook is absent. Motion passes, all right, and then we added, item F today, GFL residential trash collection, project assigned to priority waste.
Yeah, this came over the weekend, so it was received after the packet going out and such, so, you may or may not have heard that GFL is selling their route to priority waste effective June 30th, later this month, and I spoke last week, finally, it's around from priority area rep. No for sure that we are actively transitioned, everything settled, and they don't know who all from GFL will remain, they're hoping most everybody that's in place will remain. And again, our discussion was, you know, my, my hope is that we don't have been noticed that they changed, right, maybe they better put trucks and use their own, but our current contract with GFL is still in place, and there's an assignment clause in the contract, we can assign over to them, so the same rates, the same, everything in the contract will be followed and picked up after the approval from me to sign the assignment of this over to you later.
Are they going to stick with our commercial GFL?
They are doing republics.
Oh, that's right.
When they leave that all, remember they sold the residential to GFL.
Yes.
You just, you just extended that, republic.
Yeah.
So this is obviously affecting a lot of the communities, I have four meetings tomorrow.
Oh, if you go on Facebook?
Yeah.
It's crazy.
I've been around long enough to watch both of these companies coming from Michigan, from Brown Zero, both are very good, priorities very good, GFL is very good, that type of, multiple contract municipalities with both, some assets, so they'll take over the content of the law, they have to accept it as is. Terms apply, everything stays the same under the contract, and these assignment documents are being worked on, lots, lots of communities, that's all of Southeast Michigan, which GFL have a lot of points.
Do you have any concerns for us?
Is that, is that transfer a good thing?
Well.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is why do we have to sign something, I assume it's a?
Well, in, in your, in your contract with GFL, there's an assignment provision that says we, we have the right with your consent to assign the terms of this contract, you know, if something happens, because you'll be left without provider. So this is them issuing out to you saying, hey, contractually, we're selling off these assets, it's really an asset sale, it's not, it's not a purchase. They're selling out the assets of the Southeast routes to priority, we're asking you to allow us to assign you the contract to priority, yes. And so, priority has to pick up the contract as is, and perform under the contract as is, what the rate sense is, and anything else you have in the contract as is. It's not a time, you don't get to renegotiate the contract, they get to take.
That's my next question, thank you.
I'm curious to see how far we lead in our contract.
You are two out of?
About five years, I think, here's two or three years, maybe, maybe a year before.
Can we keep the bits and everything?
We haven't heard any details of, will there be any change of, I doubt it, most of them, a lot of them don't buy all the inventory or workplace like that.
Buying the assets, so they're buying the toys.
They could all in their own.
They'll want to buy all those.
Come around and say, here's these break, yellow recycling bins we'd like to use now, but you already have a lot of?
They're not take away, I guess.
No, they're not.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't think so.
So if you look at the CCs down there, Don Bradd, who I've known for about 134 years, Don has been with, in the waste industry forever, he is, he really is the backbone of, of GFL's performance, and always has been, he's just a wonderful, he's moving priority management system.
I just basically need permission, you guys are saying, there was a page two, literally, the only thing on page two was, village boss were defining the titles. So I just didn't print it, because that was all it was. But with your permission, I'll say that.
I'll make a motion about, you know, if the village manager decides to sign, be assigned, people were, be assigned, you remember, then this is, reassign our trash, and I'll think, residential trash pickup from GFL.
Support.
Motion by Helmut, supported by Negocia. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none, motion passes. There were item 10, there were no items, you're looking at the consent agenda, exclusive, and then moving on to item 11, there's a second opportunity for public comment. Go once, one, five, six, all right. Moving on to community reports. Bojo?
I was again was not able to make it last minute, your job, but I do know that, you know, it has a separate building that they're leasing out, and that company is needing a bigger place, which is good, because nobody needs a bigger place. So, um, looking at them moving out and more being able to use that space for their many employees that they know that, so they're not going to be that there, so it's good news. That's all.
But any commission, cable commission?
I was not with cable commission, I was, well, did we not?
Yeah, we signed for sign and use for the good egg, and then?
Oh, we did, we were west for sign for the good egg, we get to read questions, we have, it was not.
And what they pull is large, they don't know.
You know what?
Give me a A.
D, I have a list here, Kelly is out busy, they have a new event starting this, this evening at the line dancing, I think in Washington Square, so, first thing, um, just want to thank Jacob and Natalie for outstanding ability at the Main Street Awards. And tonight's line dancing, car cruise and wine dining, Wednesday is tomorrow, concerts in the park begin Thursday, 80s is a late night Friday, I don't know if that's each night, each party, or is this? They cleaned up all the community spaces and added some pre-games for the families, the mobiles will be out there, at least in Washington Square, I don't know if someone's in there, looking at 501 board members, if anyone is interested, please email DDA. I do want to thank, looking for 501 board members, if anyone is interested, please email DDA. I'm not sure if that would type.
That's very big shift.
What was that, the 80s night?
Uh, 80s, 80s ladies night, Friday.
What happened to the 80s, I don't know.
Disco.
You did, I don't know.
No, you got Cyndi Lauper, Madonna, Joe Jack.
Glad I was gone.
All kinds of good stuff happened to me.
That's it for the DDA, at least that was a real quick thing she put together for us, because she couldn't be here tonight, but. We, we were at two different development, pre, pre-development, both related to talent projects in the downtown, one, one a building that's, financial institution in the frame, getting restructured, but it won't really be, because they're looking for private, who would see what we're, what we don't allow over, in certain things. And the other ones debating lots, along in 24, remember today, but hopefully some good news coming forward. And eventually, they should be able to plan a mission. We've got a pretty decent planning mission meeting set for next week, a couple of those elements coming back, we presume, conditional zoning requests, and we saw a wife and two triangle, which is that being a crowd wash down there in South Washington. For conditionals, all the hearings are all been out, or notices have all gone out. Yeah, it'd be longer than this one.
Right, Paul, your trail, Mr. Midor?
We met out, way out of winter last time we met, so, we're going to be, DNR on some grants to help them resurface some of the trail here, there's a lot of the bids coming in, even then, hearing nearly double what they were a couple of years ago, so they had scaled back. But the DNR also came up with some federal dollars, you can apply for the front truck, you can apply for, and so they're going to re-rear in fact, apply for those sometime over this summer, they did an ABU in September dish, that might help parlay some of the money they have, and do some additional money, get some additional hearing through service preparation and repairs done. And then I know the founding trail had approved, and the council approved Jacob, Justin Schilling, walk last week, and all chief's, so it was there, it went on Saturday, but it'd be on Sunday, the weather, so it was pretty good.
But they have a lot of walkers.
I, I don't know. Yeah, it's about an hour or so there.
Manager and staff report?
One thing I noted down there in the interior, yes, they are, former DDA director Glenn Payton, we found out David. DDA director, Glenn Page, we found out there to go pass away, we don't know any details, he's a dumb hoe, I saw him a few years ago, I had to pick something up from him, he was only a few years old, and I, I don't know, I think Vicki in our office, who was off today, she was here yesterday, but off today, did find some information on Facebook and validated, kind of shocking for us, but I just went next to them, sort of, but, other than that, we're clicking along, our, our project went really well, contractor, underground contractor, excavating, Hux Paying did a great job, there's one little group they did out there by our poller, where someone put it around spot initially, and had to move it. They finished the, the approach on Hudson Street last week, or the weekend it was, and opened it up, everything's worked really well, really downpour here Wednesday afternoon, you recall, and we were standing out watching, I was, and watching the drainage work really well, taking water like crazy and breaking it on it, the height received it yesterday, it's kind of less, we have a few partial items, things to do, the doors won't be, wait till the hinges backwards, so it's on a downturn closure, but other than that, within two or three weeks, I think those should be in, installed, other than that, we were very happy with the contractor, and just so, if you recall, there's also a contractor that was aboard the project for Park Street in the one lane, so, between Row and keeping the same inspector and Huch and Boswick, I think, we're looking good, I think, Park Street project as well, our drop box will be back in service, we ordered it, we wait for it to arrive, it's being the steel, it'll be right out there in the same general area, it may make it to town this week, if not, probably next week, it should be here in its home. Everyone was very cooperative, we think, this is, we, a lot of us, in Coach, over that Northwest lot, where your staff and turn, employees or visitors here, resident and org employees in the Southwest lot, and moved to the Northwest lot, so it was pretty crowded out there for a while, but everyone worked well.
So, are you seeing the, lots of usage of the Park Lots?
You know, this afternoon, I was out looking at a couple things, taking a couple photos, and I was surprised it wasn't that many returning partners, because a lot of times you leave here four, five in the afternoon, and there was a dozen more cars coming, the employees of the restaurants that's up downtown, perhaps they have, those have been open for a couple days, they have a bounce back over the next, people expect that they will, that brings up a lot of space available there. Yeah.
Terry?
Yeah, I want to take a moment to share some personal meanings with you, after six years of dedicated service, which is Oxford, I've made the decision to retire.
Yeah, we want to forget.
Didn't we, didn't we, German?
No, we're ramping up, come on.
Oh, I shouldn't go there.
No, I just, I want to take, you know, I just want to express my deepest gratitude to each and every person that I get privileged to work with, I mean, there's, there's some really talented and dedicated individuals in the Village of Oxford, I mean, it's been wonderful, in fact, I can honestly say that the Village of Oxford has been the most unexpected surprise of my career, so, you know, overall, the village has been very good to me, and I have really enjoyed with every, working with everybody, so it's made this decision hard one to announce, but I think I've accomplished everything that I came here to do, and I'm proud of what we achieved, and the relationships we've built together, so, I have been discussing an exit strategy with Joe and Bob, and I'm willing to, you know, help in the transition period, Joe and I talked about some options that might work for the village and me, until a replacement is from.
July first, twenty twenty five.
Yeah, that was, yeah, as far as nailing down a date, I, I think we just need to start the process, I don't know what's going to be out there, you know, we've talked about this, it's maybe shallow pool, but maybe not, you know, we'll see, and, again, it's just been, you know, my honor, privileged to meet with you all, I hope you feel the same.
Thanks, Terry.
Well, thanks, very, very good, Terry. We'll talk, yeah, we'll talk.
File?
Motion to deny.
Support?
Support.
That's not legal for you.
Just want to tell you, we have a new judge down in the District Court for prosecutions, the chief continues to provide my office with really just fantastic prosecution backup, and the new judge has been very easy to work with, and get a chance, maybe, and meet the new judge, but I don't.
Do they have a name?
You know, Lucy, I'm not going to say her, right, so I'm not going to say it, she, she had an office down the street from you, with home, and she was a plaintiff, but she replaces Judge Nicholson, and, again, your police department puts together prosecution packages, and they might like the earnings, so, that's it.
Councilwoman, to the job.
Well, congrats, Terry, and while I wish we weren't named, it's going to be hard to fill that position, so, other than that, I, can we have any?
I'll congratulate you. Much bigger. I do want to thank the police department, they were working, what, the World of the Fair Memorial Day, the twenty-third, for the parade, again, you know, to get any trouble, reserves out there, part timers, all the timers, and I wish I had gone to Justin's walk, I wasn't able to attend that, and that's it.
Nick Seo?
Um, thank you to the DDA, we were well represented, we had the awards ceremony, I believe we had over thirty folks there representing Oxford, so we were nominated for a lot, we won some, and just a great time all around to see Jack, and leadership, and everyone really there, kind of promoting what's going on in the downtown areas. Also, on a personal note, I'm very stand by this news, Terry, you be best, you are appreciated and look forward to kind of trying to clone you as best we can, and then my daughter also made the Liverpool Football Club in Carson, so excited about that, and, on to you.
I think we did soccer.
Yes, soccer.
Liverpool.
So, it's not a real sport.
Thank you, welcome, Terry, I think it's amazing, but that sprinkle and a bit of sleep deprivation, and all of a sudden, you can't remember how it goes, despite hearing it a hundred times, Terry, thank you very much for your service for us.
Thank you.
You were able to, you were able to put this out, and clear out some, you know, the details and charter and whatnot, so I appreciate it. All right, well, we met our goal, and I'll end the panel motion, go adjourned at seven thirty-nine.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Aye. You need to try.